All right, welcome everybody to the work session of Tuesday, March 5th, 2018. We start off with financial update with our comptroller extra today, Rob Dearie, to present the 2018 preliminary year end totals and allocation of 2018 contingency funds.
All right, all you.
Nice with that intro.
Not everybody gets it here so like that.
Next time, please, next time, please hold the applause to the end.
So first I'll talk about the allocation of the 2018 contingency funds. So just a reminder of what this is in the budget. We typically budget $150,000 in each year. And these are for expenses that come up throughout the year that just can't be anticipated. There's obviously in a, in a $40 million budget, there are plenty of expenses that we just don't know about in, you know, August or September of the prior year. So in years past, I think every year that I've been comptroller, we usually put $150,000. In 2018, we actually, in the preliminary budget included the number $291,187,000. A couple of reasons for that. Number one, we knew the police contract was due to be settled, so we included an amount in it for the police contract. Actually settled a little bit higher than that, but we were able to cover that. And we also included funds for the non-union salary increases. We kind of changed that process up this year. In prior years, they kind of did the non-union salaries at the end of the preliminary. And what happened is I had to, after I printed out the preliminary budget book, had to go back in and change a whole bunch of numbers in it. Well, I didn't do that at the end of the year, so the money stayed in the contingency line. It didn't get allocated out for the salary line. So that's what I'm asking for at this point. So I'm asking to take out of the $291,000 in contingency, $97,730 for police salaries, an amount that totals $36,000 for the non-union salaries as itemized there. $150,000 is the settlement amount we agreed to in December for Summit Greenfield. That was the reimbursement of fees. That had been an ongoing topic. They had paid us some larger amount than that. And through negotiation, we returned $150,000. So that would take that $150,000. And the remainder, that leaves $7,377,000 left in the contingency. I'm going to allocate that towards the litigation line. That was budgeted at $50,000 for the year. The total litigation line came in at $70,628. So we're very close on that. And I will show you, I've got a slide in a minute that shows you the legal bills from here. We did pretty well under that. Any questions, comments?
Before Rob leaves tonight, we will be asking the board to actually approve a resolution that specifies the transfer of the contingency, just as he described in this memo, of each one of these topics. Contingency must be specifically designated in the resolution by the board.
Right, so in December, you granted me the ability to transfer funds, transfer money between funds for everything but the contingency line. So this is just a line that typically I report exactly what we're spending this money on. So that's what I've done here. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about the 2018 year end. So we haven't exactly closed out the year yet. That's a process, and we'll have the auditors in the week of the 25th. So we're still, it's kind of fluid at this point. There's still a few more entries that need to be made. We've got some payments that we've needed, we need board approval for, I think, one tonight. So there's some different payments in order to close out 2018. But at this point, I've got a very good idea where we'll end. I'm never going to give you a final number at this point. The auditors come in, they may reverse something. They may tell me I need to move something between different lines. So I'm not here to finalize that. That will be in May when I release the financial statements. But just wanted to give the board an update where we basically ended 2018. I made it a little colorful for you too, so. So what you're looking at in this chart is the general fund, basically the revenue and expenses from 2019. On the left side is the revenue. The budgeted number is in blue and the actual number is in pink. I'll go into a little detail in a minute.
Lovely, pretty chart.
What's up, Scotty?
Perfect, actually. Revenue's higher, expenses lower.
Yeah, exactly, it's perfect.
It's looking good. What's that? Oh, I did, it should be 2018, sorry.
I was like, wow, we are really good.
Sorry about that, and it's on every slide. I did that on every slide, so. Okay, just imagine that says 18, because.
So focused on the color.
I was, I was.
And the fabulous numbers, how great.
So going into detail, but this, this just demonstrates, you see on the left, the revenue is significantly higher than the budgeted, and the expenses at this point are significant, oh, significantly, they're, they're lower. Well, we do have a few more expenses coming in. Nothing that I anticipate will make us go over budget for the year. So a little detail on the general fund surplus and where those have come. So the very first grouping of columns is the building permits. That came in actually at 1.4 million against a budgeted number of a little over 900,000. So we've upped this number the last several years, and we continue to exceed the number that we have in there under building permits. Obviously, Chappaqua Crossing has a lot to do with that, but the building department just overall is, we are issuing a lot of permits and collecting a lot of fees. So that's, we continue to bump that number up each year. I think we're at 950 or 975 for 2019. And hopefully, we can keep up that pace. The sales tax, county sales tax is the next group of columns. And we actually saw, again, that's another number that we bumped up. We have bumped up the last couple of years budget-wise, and due to the economy, we've exceeded that once again. The 2.8 million is actually the highest county sales tax we've had in my, going on ninth year as comptroller. So it was actually a little bit of a surprise. I knew the economy was good, but shows even better. The next column, state aid mortgage tax. Again, another column that we continue to edge up with the improving economy. We exceeded that again, 1.1 million for the year against 975,000. We actually had very disappointing, I get mortgage tax twice a year. I get one payment in June and one payment in December. And the payment in June was not even 400,000, which was less than 50% of the budget.
I remember that.
Yeah, I was definitely worried.
I was worried about the market, real estate market, always buying houses.
Yeah, and the December payment was better than expected. Next group, interest earnings. So going along with the economy and the interest rate increase, we saw a sizable jump in our interest earnings versus what we budgeted. So a couple of reasons for that. Number one is the economy, and I think we saw, we see three increases last year from the Fed? I think we do, at least two, but I believe it was three last year. So that helps. But we also had a couple of other reasons. So if you remember last year, at the end of 2017, we collected almost $11 million in tax prepayments. So I took that money and put it into a CD for the majority of last year. So I actually got a better rate of return than I would have anticipated. Also, we went and borrowed money in February for the project out there. I think, I, you know, because he's sitting in meetings with us. The payments have been slow, the payment requests have been slow incoming. We have the money to pay them, they just hadn't been invoicing us. So we actually had millions of dollars sitting there, and I did invest that also in CDs for a period of time.
Would you put them in just like short-term CDs?
Yeah, just short-term. The, the tax prepayment, I think I did a six-month and then maybe a three-month or two one-months, because I had to, I have to make the county whole, I have to pay the county 60% of their levy in May, and then the other 40% in October. So I had some money longer and some money shorter. And we've actually, you approved at the beginning of the organizational meeting this year, the town to begin depositing money in the NY class. It's an investment pool for municipalities. They're actually paying as of today like 2.28%. So it's actually paying, it's paying more than what I was getting on CDs towards the end of last year. So we've got some money invested in that, and I'm moving more into that. So interest earnings should look probably, maybe not that good, because I did have all that excess cash last year for a few more months. Next category, planning board inspections. Again, I think that's strictly, I think that has to do with the Summit Greenfield site, the Chappaqua Crossing. You see, we typically don't have much income in that line, but we did exceed it in 2018. And the last category that I've shown here, obviously, there's quite a few revenue categories, and some are up and some are down. But I think this is, demonstrates the surpluses that we see overall. Summer camps, that actually came in a little over 500,000. That has been, that was the best summer camp year that we've had in probably five years. So that had fluctuated significantly, and I really, I, I have to say that I think that's due to the staff that's running the summer camp now.
I think starting with Phil Garrison, reverse the trip, including Ike. Yeah, they've done a really good job of tightening that up.
But did it, registration start yet?
They have, yeah.
We should do a newsletter dedicated to it.
It was in the newsletter, or there was a blast or something.
Yeah, there was a blast from the Parks and Rec.
I usually copy it and include it in the newsletter, but we could do a dedicated class for it. We've done that in the past.
Okay, so those are just a sampling of the general fund revenues. The total general fund revenues at this point are about 1.5 million over budget for the year. Just to show a little bit of detail on the expenditures, we did show overall, they're lower than budget for the year. And that's why you'll see some of the columns below the zero and a couple of them one above. So again, from the far left, we had in two separate lines, town board consulting and master plan consulting, and 50,000 in each of those lines. We actually did not use those in 2018. So they were renewed for 2019. The money's there, and you know, essentially, the money from, it's not as though the money from last year is wasted. It basically rolls into fund balance, so should you need that, that's where, that's where it's sitting. But you'll have another 100,000 split between those two lines in 2019. Property tax refunds, we've done pretty well over the last few years. That budget line is typically budgeted at $100,000. That's usually more than enough to cover any of the large certs that we have, save two over the last few years. We had Summit Greenfield several years ago, and prior to that, was it Riverwoods? Riverwoods, we had a couple large that were like $200,000 tax certs overall. The next line, it's a program that Ike, it's, he budgeted about $50,000 for it. He had a vision of running some team trips. And there was corresponding revenue line and expense, and it actually didn't pan out. So he kind of threw, threw it against the wall to see what would stick, and he didn't get a lot of response on it. So, so that's fine. So it was a reduction in expense and corresponding revenue. Employee benefits came in surprisingly very well. $35,000 under budget. When you're talking overall employee benefits in the general fund, you're talking about $6 million. So to be within 35,000 is, is pretty close. Health insurance was about where we thought it would be. Retirement contributions for the town have dropped over the last couple of years slightly, but they're, they've gone down. So a couple of ones on the, on the wrong side of the budget number, the legal expense. Total expense in the four legal lines that we have is over expended by $8,400. I think there's four lines that make that up, and the budget's about $400,000. So again, when you're talking 400,000, we came within $8,000. We were pretty close. Before anybody asks the question, and I confirmed with our council, we talked about that litigation line a minute ago that was over expended by about $20,000. You know, we do have the insurance coverage that covers Article 78s. So that coverage changed over the last year. So the, I think it was two years ago, we had to set $50,000, and they paid us up to $50,000, reimbursed us for Article 78 costs. At this point, it's changed, and the town self-insures for the first $25,000. So essentially, they don't start paying until dollar 26,000 or 25,000 and more. So the most Article 78s don't reach the individual one. So we've had a high volume of them, but they've been disposed of without a lot of legal expense. So, and that's good.
That's the good side, the bad side is insurance won't pick any of that up under $25,000, so.
And the police overtime, significant over-budget number there. I think part of that is the resource officer that's at the school. And I know a significant chunk of that has to do with the police presence outside Chappaqua Crossing towards the end of the year.
Did they get reimbursed yet?
Okay, but we should have revenue.
We're getting reimbursed for that, but we haven't, we haven't yet.
Are we getting one reimbursed?
So I can't, I can't include it. So there's about $40,000, I believe, that was billed to, they billed for all of it. There's about $40,000 that was applicable to 2018. We have yet to receive that. I think according to Nick, they have until, I thought they had 60 or 90 days. Whatever it is, I believe they have till the end of March to pay us. So they haven't yet reimbursed us for that. I'm looking for that, obviously, I can't include it until I have it. If I have it before I close the year, that would be fine. Even if I don't, our expenses still look all right, and it won't be the end of the world.
And is the school reimbursing us at all for the resource officer, really?
Well, that's actually why I'm taking this picture, because that's supposed to be a short-term thing. While they discuss the school, it's not really technically a school resource officer. They're supposed to be making that decision already. It's supposed to be in December, remember, long-term, short-term. Well, John Schau is in the next room, so. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send him an email tomorrow, because.
We, we were covering them while we made up their mind, but they should have made up their mind.
You know, they got the status quo going here.
Well, yeah.
We can, you know, borrow it for fields.
They sort of did.
Just saying.
No, no, and I have to tell you, regarding the Kinsco, that we have worked out a very nice arrangement with the schools, which is far more like.
Yeah. What if we have a controversy?
Far more than.
A 20-year controversy, 30-year controversy.
Yeah, really, way to go. So very pleased about that.
So moving on from the general fund to the only problem fund of the year, the highway fund. If everybody remembers, at the beginning of the year, last year, the first three months of the year were particularly bad. I think for the year, we were about $80,000 over budget in the salt expenditure, and we were over in the overtime as well, and other related. So that was due to the harsh winter. If you remember, the budget process over the summer and the fall this year, we upped those numbers significantly, because the last couple of years, we hadn't changed the budget for, I think, six or seven years that I've been doing the budget. We've had the number the same, and some years a little above, some years a little below. And then we had three years that were significantly over, and we said, all right, it's no longer an N Y. It's probably the reality now, and we adjusted the budget. So it'll be the last year we get caught on that. The expenses are a little bit higher. The revenues are higher too, because we got, if you remember, we also, we get CHIPS money every year, but we also had some extra money come in through the extreme winter recovery program and the pave New York program. So that was about an additional 100,000, I think. So the board at that time, when we had the additional revenue, then approved additional road paving. So we were also, did more road paving than we budgeted. The upshot of that is going to be, we might end up actually dipping into our reserves for the highway fund. That should be the only fund that we would need to take any fund balance from this year. I'm estimating 100,000 or so. Again, it's not the end of the world, the, you know, there's nothing you can do. We had the.
And where would that leave our balance?
It's going to be close to, if we take 100,000, it'll probably be around 600,000 or 700,000. The highway fund's getting a little slim, but that's not typically an issue. That's something I can adjust at budget time this year, because we've got a very healthy general fund fund balance. So the general and the highway fund are the same tax base, so you can make related transfers between the two of those. So that's, you're not really upset about the highway fund being a little bit lower. The refuse fund, pretty close to budgeted, budgeted numbers. Expenses actually came in a little bit lower. Revenues actually came in a little bit higher. Where you see the difference, and I'll just point this out, the revenue and expense should be, the budget should be the same every year. But what happens is there are what we call encumbrances. So if money was spent in the prior year, it's encumbered, we do a purchase order for it. We actually, if we, for example, buy a truck and we order it in December, we're not going to get it till June. So the money comes from '17, it rolls over into '18, and what that does is increase the budget for that. So that's why the budget for expenses is $200,000 over. We did actually have some vehicles that went over into the new year. So the upshot of that is we're going to be very close budget-wise. I don't think we're going to be taking any fund balance. The fund balance in the refuse fund is pretty healthy at this point anyway, and it doesn't look like we'll need to allocate any. And the last fund we'll talk about is the water fund. And basically, what I'm showing you here, which is everything below the zero, we were below budget on both revenue and expenses for the year. Below budget and revenue, because we had one of the wettest summers that we can imagine, and you get some of our large water consumers, Hudson Hills Golf Course and places like that, that the revenue just wasn't there this year. So the revenue was off.
On, on the upside, like, boy, never looked so good. I took pictures of everything.
Environmentally, it's a good thing.
Actually, I had a freaking crabgrass.
But what goes along with that is when, when we're selling less water, you look and we're using less of the resources. So if you look at the cost of, of raw water, you look at the, right here is the variable cost of raw water, was $100,000 below budget. The excess per capita, $200,000 below budget. So typically, we consume more than the threshold. Usually, in about six months out of the year, we're paying that excess per capita. And I think it was only like three months this year, and it was much lower than it typically is.
The Groton River backup.
Yep, that's the electricity to the.
The, the, the one at the, on Inningwood Pump Station. Isn't that just a delay in expense?
Well, it's been, we've, we've carried that expense in the budget year to year, anticipating this was going to come online three, four, or five years ago, and it hasn't. There are funds allocated in the 19 budget for that. We didn't expend them last year. I know that, didn't Jerry say they just ran that pump last weekend?
Yep, they finally ran it without tripping the electric, electricity, which is fabulous. Took them three months to figure out what was tripping it. They kind of replaced some outside wires, a transformer. We had to replace a, what's it called, a circuit breaker, the breaker box. And it's finally running, which is a good thing, so.
So all told, the expenses for the water fund were close to $1 million under the budget. The revenue ended up being about $300,000 under budget. And the offset of that is we allocated in the 18 budget, $775,000 worth of fund balance to offset that. Well, we won't need to take any of that in 2018, so that money will stay in fund balance, which is good news for some of the capital projects that we know we have coming out of the water fund. We will probably add to fund balance rather than take any fund balance in the water fund this year. So that's good news.
That's good.
So this was just kind of presented as a snapshot, like I said, not totally detailed, but obviously, the board needs to know where we are in all these situations, and there won't be any surprises. The financials will look like this. I'm not going to quote any exact numbers on fund balance, but I would anticipate adding to fund balance in three funds and probably drawing from fund balance in the highway fund, so.
So while I've got Rob here, there are, are there any other questions for him on this? Otherwise, we'll just, there are a couple of items that are on the, the other part of the, the work session that were just, looks like.
Financial related.
Yeah, financial related, that while Rob's here, I want to be able to go over them with the board and just take advantage of his presence. One was water rents. If the board recalls, every year about this time, we take in and review delinquent water tax accounts. I think that has to be two quarters.
It is anything delinquent as of October 1st. So I guess it's like a two-quarter look back.
Two-quarter look back. And the law allows us to put only certain expenditures on the tax bill. There's something called a, a move tax, and this goes, actually, is a line item on the tax bill. So these are the expenditures that, these are the move taxes that we have right now for water rents. There will be a final request to the board next town board meeting. So on the 12th, we'll actually get a final report. We have incoming, you know, checks, payments till the end of this week, and then we just cut it off. And any one of these outstanding, we put the, the bills, the outstanding delinquencies on their tax bill, just as a line that reads water rent, and it just gets paid, so.
And I think, did the board already approve the Mount Kisco list, or will that be next week too?
No, it's going to be next week as well. So oftentimes, we have Newcastle residents that are serviced by Mount Kisco. Actually, a far smaller percentage now that I think has been, it used to be Highway Road, but we've taken them over to some Newcastle Stanley District. So I think there's just a couple of errands streets. So every once in a while, we end up with like five Newcastle residents that owe Mount Kisco water rents, and we try to be good neighbors and from that policy. On the tax bills, and what about, do we get any from Two Castles?
No, Two Castles is actually ours. We discovered that last year, that was actually the tax, so.
Oh, yeah.
There's actually several properties on there.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, there's that. There were actually three change orders, one of which is the one that Ivy had talked about or asked for last time. So Rob has taken and provided us with a revised expenditure for our infrastructure project, and what he includes is the last of the change orders. And so we were asked to alter the budget to reflect the additional charges for taking out the temporary asphalt in front of family bridges. And we're going to be removing the curb in front of the historical society, at least a portion of it, and that asphalt as well. And what would those lines look like? Opsioli did a back-of-the-envelope rough estimate, and we're going to be asking the board for an approval of a $35,000 change order for that additional work.
Because why is Paul asked to be in it as opposed to you?
Because it's, because it's a line, a line item overrun. We have line items for each and every one of these, so they won't give it to us until afterwards. So we're approving it ahead of time. Though, so because they anticipated as a line item overrun, there's just simply going to be more asphalt being removed than, than they anticipated, because they put it in already, but we have a line item for it. So we basically know what's going to be.
We know the exact cost. We know, it's not like we're bidding out a separate project, like one of the change orders was a culvert. That just wasn't included, so we had to get a separate bit, you know, a separate proposal for that.
So, so I have a question for you on, on this, this whole budget thing, just to make sure I understand. When I look at this, I look at Boswell, whose most recent invoice was.
August, right?
Right. We, we received other ones from that. So does this reflect all the invoices from June forward, an estimate?
No, well, they're, they're going to bill us until they reach 1 million, so, and they have done that. So under the contract, we owe them $1 million till we get to April.
Right, but what I'm saying.
It doesn't include that right now, no.
It doesn't include that, and does it include the fact that we probably expect the project to continue through?
Well, it, it doesn't, yeah, we, we expect that. We know that that's going to happen, but we can't quantify that at this point.
Well, well, I mean, we should be able to quantify it to a certain extent.
I can't tell you how much more time possible would, would be between April and, and.
And November.
Which, they provide us with a estimate? Errands have to suspend with their current contract, right?
Right, we do. It's just a matter of whether or not we would be paying. It's just a matter of whether or not we would be paying for like John Kazwick's time or we would be paying for Shaw's time. There's a huge difference between the two of them. It also depends whether or not we're going to do the night work and day work, and I'm just not sure yet, um.
Well, I, I guess part of the question I have is, I mean, we're coming right up on April, and April, you know, things will start going full force again.
Right, so, so once we have a monthly, you know, estimate from them, we'll have a better idea of what, what that budget's gonna be.
But don't you think we should have that conversation about how we're gonna manage the closeout of this project? And who, what the staffing requirements are gonna be and having them provide us an estimate?
I can, I can certainly ask them for an estimate, it's, I mean, not a problem.
Are they, are we waiting on ELQ providing us with the new project plan?
So, some of this may have to go into executive session. Um, and, and I'm happy to do that, if you want, we can actually break and go into executive session. Um, let me just talk to you about the other two executive, uh, uh, change orders, and then we'll go in and finish this conversation. Okay, great. Um, so the other two change orders is, uh, one of them has to do with, and that's the one we're gonna ask you to approve tonight. It's a seven thousand dollar change order for drainage work that was done as part of the King Street sidewalk. Um, there are still, still, um, open, uh, issues with, uh, the, um, uh, with engineering and New York State DOT approval of that project. So we've, um, withheld money until we get our approvals from the state. But this was a seven thousand dollar expenditure that Landy did for us, um, who was the contractor on phase one. And so we'd like to be able to close out that portion of it because it's got nothing to do with the, yeah, the work. And it was done in eighteen, and that's one of the bills that, uh, uh, Rob is anxious to get paid because, uh, for these orders, that's something that we should be paying before the end of the year.
Where is, where is that on here?
Oh, that's on this project.
That's not part, it's, it's the King Street sidewalk.
It's the, um, the King Street sidewalk.
Oh, it's the King Street here.
By, 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 sorry, sorry, yeah. Yeah, everything's King Street, sorry. Um, and the second one has to do with a, um, a change, a slight change of scope, um, for the people that are doing, uh, the playground and basketball court. Because we lost parking in the back because of the position of the basketball court, since the hill is staying. Um, we, um, needed to take and plan out additional parking in the front. And when they did that change of scope, there's an additional fee because we, we weren't planning on doing anything in the front. So there's, uh, there's drainage, lighting, and the parking in general, and that was a, help me out here.
Did we get a picture of that? A drawing, or have they done that yet?
Yeah, we have drawings, yeah, we have drawings, so.
Can we see what that's gonna look like?
Um, yeah, sure. It's, um, yeah. It's double maintenance, I'm gonna just see what this change order was. Um, six thousand dollars for the additional scope. It's the front.
So this is the redesign?
The creation of the, yes, of the front area. That was never in their scope of service, they were only responsible to do the back. We didn't realize we'd have to go for the front. We thought we were going to reclaiming areas that were back there and wouldn't be losing parking. When the basketball court got shifted, we lost more parking than we thought, and we realized that we needed to reclaim some of the front. So, because of the position of the underground utilities, it needs additional drainage work, and you did, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing's ever missing. Just goes on, anyway. So that's the last of the change orders. Um.
Where are we in terms of the, um, our, the draft RFP for the construction?
Um, that's about to go out. We're waiting on, we'd actually been waiting on one last thing, which is the electrical conduits under the basketball court and in the back. For whatever reason, they were waiting on some, it was a misunderstanding. They thought they were waiting on, um, soil sampling, and they had had it already. So we actually expected that to go out, um, um, first week in March, and we're still hoping that it's going out either March eighth or March eleventh. They basically should be done.
Can we see that RFP?
Yeah, sure.
The town board doesn't need to approve that before it gets released?
Um, not usually, it goes through our council, and we hired a consulting firm to take into it based upon what it is that you approved for back there. The placements, um, the lighting, the size of the equipment.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I don't, I didn't know, it was prior to my time on the board.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, that you approved it, yeah. Um, I don't. Okay. But I, I don't, I don't know, remember approving anything prior to your time being on the board. I remember there was lots of drawings and some discussion.
Yeah.
But I don't really remember a formal resolution.
Of approving what?
A final basketball court design, but I may not have been here, so.
Um.
But I really don't remember a formal resolution or seeing it in the package.
I don't think there's a formal resolution, but we've had a number of meetings where Jeremy's at, and sometimes I'm at, and then we usually update the board after.
Yeah, with pictures and stuff like that as to where everything was, um.
It's very kind of, I think, a little fluid, maybe a concrete final plan needs to be distributed. I don't think we approved, we don't know what it's gonna cost yet. No, I know, but I don't even think the final design, I'm sure it's gorgeous, like whatever you guys came up with, but I'm not sure.
No, you, you absolutely approved the final placement and everything else that had to do with the ERB and where that.
We did, we did, we definitely did. Yeah.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, we had, we had, uh, two different, um, layouts, and based upon the environmental review, we went with the one where we left the burn exactly where it is and put it in, restrained by, um, the DEC Churchill Brook, the DEC weapons that are back there in Churchill Brook. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to share with you the, the plans, the, um, the bit specs are, if they're not finished, they're just about finished. Stephanie Burns from Keenan Bean was going over them just to make sure that all the Is were dotted and Ts were crossed. And, um, yeah, there's drawings, so I'm happy to share it with the board some time soon.
And I, I wanna see the drawings for what they've just did up here. Now, are they gonna do the same work? Who's, we now, should we do this parking lot up here, you said? Because we're losing more spaces.
Yes.
So who's, is that a separate, gonna be a separate RFP, or we're gonna, gonna include them together?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's included, but, but they're separate items. So that we will, we will receive, um, a breakdown of what each item costs.
Cause that one I wanna see.
And if you wanna hold, yes, if you wanna hold that thought. Um, we have a motion to go into executive session, and we'll just clean up the final discussions on these points.
Okay.
Sure, well, is there anything else we have to do, uh, with Rob?
Um, well, Rob's here, um, the, um.
I mean, is Rob gonna stay here for part of the discussion regarding, okay, okay.
Yeah, the, yes, this, yes. Um, the, um, the late edition of the trucks.
The police?
The police, uh, the two vehicles?
Yeah, with the.
The three vehicles.
Yeah, it's two marked and the one administrative type vehicle.
Okay, there, there is, yeah, there is just one last thing, and that is, um.
It's the last thing in the package. It starts on page, like, thirty, thirty-two.
Yeah, the police had put in a request for, um, uh, two marked, uh, patrol vehicles and, uh, and one civilian vehicle, or unmarked.
Is that in the budget?
Yes, it was budgeted, um, in twenty nineteen, and these numbers are all consistent with the budget that we had done. But, just, I brought here, Rob is here for verification.
Maybe they wanted more vehicles, but we found them in, yeah.
Yes, we found them, the, the truck that they've been using, they're thrilled with it, yay, the pickup truck. That was actually moved.
And then I'll ask a question for Jeremy, we're gonna go out to, um.
Auction?
Auction for the, uh, the ones we're replacing.
Yeah, probably.
We typically do.
I mean, I know it's time, it's time, the miles, so.
Yeah, as soon as it's good. It takes, yeah, no, 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 it, it, yeah, it just takes a while to get, to get these in.
They're serviceable, yeah. So I, should we get a little bit for? Yeah.
It, um, so it's gonna be several months.
Yeah, the lead time is, is.
Like six months, or, yeah.
Yeah, well, three months at least, yeah.
It, it's a while. So as soon as we get them in, and, and once they get properly detailed and stuff like that, then we'll be able to put the other ones out of, out of service.
Yeah, they're, or, and, and.
Offended with the electronics and computers and, and, and.
Lots of this and stuff like that, yeah, computers, yeah. It takes, it definitely takes a while. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, um, so, uh, quick motion to go into executive session to discuss contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, okay, Ryan.
Okay, so, um, do you wanna do, uh, just the vape stuff quickly and then more? Because Kevin's gonna set up.
Okay.
Alright, so what do we got here? We have, uh.
So, uh, the board asked council to, uh, take a look at, um, um, revising our vape law to incorporate regional cannabis sales. Recreational, I said, recreational cannabis sales, sorry.
Alright, so you've got, uh, two laws working their way through Albany right now. One introduced by the governor, another one in the state senate, both would legalize and regulate marijuana sales, recreational marijuana sales in the state of New York. And we've seen municipalities taking a proactive approach in some cases, um, and actually adopting local legislation to deal with what folks think is inevitable, that we're gonna have some law coming out of Albany, probably later this year, that's gonna legalize marijuana sales. Uh, one of the bills, the, uh, the governor's bill, right now would not allow, uh, local villages and towns under a population of a hundred thousand to ban, uh, recreational marijuana sales. It would only be cities, uh, over a hundred thousand in population under that proposed law.
Right.
There aren't actually that many in the world.
Right, it's very few.
About seven or eight.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I think the, uh, discussion tonight is, uh, what we would wanna do as a town proactively. Uh, if anything, I know the board's talked about, uh, following in the footsteps of the vape legislation that you adopted last year, and letting, uh, essentially the marijuana, regulating the marijuana, recreational marijuana sales, uh, sort of on the, the coattails of, of that local law. And if you remember that local law.
It was on tobacco's back.
Uh, yeah, and, and it restricted, it, there are certain, uh, area restrictions with respect to the proximity of stores that sell vape products to schools, parks, uh, to other stores that would sell, so you wouldn't have a cluster of, of those types of uses. Uh, you know, so it's two thousand feet from schools, it's five hundred feet from other, uh, parks, playgrounds, things of that nature. And this is all laid out in the zoning code.
So, um, understanding that if this legislation passes, when this legislation passes, it's like it will in one form or another, we wanna be able to be nimble and be responsive. Um, that said, other municipalities that have looked at this recently, some of them have come to the conclusion that now is not a good time to try to pass something, given that the legislation's not yet passed. I know when North Castle looked at it, I think, two weeks ago, um, their council advised them that because the legislation was in flux, that perhaps it wasn't the best time to push this through. Do you have sort of an expert opinion on whether or not this is?
I don't think anyone's an expert yet, because this, what's coming out of Albany is gonna be very complex, uh, no matter what the final form is, because it's creating a whole regulatory scheme for what's gonna be a new industry in the state. So, things like, well, to what extent will local municipality be able to, um, ban? Or, you know, all of that's up in the air yet. Uh, and there are some municipalities that have taken the approach of just banning it and having that law on the books. Um, frankly, I, I think that whatever comes down, we're not gonna go from zero to sixty in five seconds in terms of stores popping up. So I think there would be, um, but, you know, I understand it's skepticism. At the same time, this is, there are a lot of unknowns.
I'm sorry.
A lot of unknowns here, uh, in terms of, you know, what is, how this is gonna shake out. And, uh, you know, I, so I, I think that if the approach that this board wanted to take was, um, one of being proactive, having something on the books, but not having, um, not, not being too aggressive in terms of the, the bite that you wanted to take. I think that, uh, using the vape law as a model is a very, um, safe approach.
Uh, in Pleasantville, uh, I was actually reading the Examiner tonight, while I was eating my dinner, that Pleasantville passed it. And they knew that it's up in the flux, and, and the article mentioned it, and they mentioned North Castle, but they wanted to send the message also. And also, they also want to, uh, they don't wanna mistake the article, but I think to a certain extent, they also wanted to, you know, not send the message to the community and the safety and health, but also to Albany, that basically these, this is something that we'd like to regulate and, and, you know, give us the ability to do that. Uh, in the final, in the final, you know, legislation that comes out. You know, rather than just sit back and sending a message that's telling Albany that, you know, we don't want it near our schools and near our religious institutions and things like that.
Right, the senate version of the law, we give local municipalities, like Newcastle, the ability to do that, but we don't know what version's gonna become law.
So, that's, I mean, I thought the article, you know, the comment is some of the Pleasantville, um, uh, council members, or what do they call them, the council members, trustees, I think it was.
Trustee, those trustees.
Good. The quotes.
I'm looking for the actual draft of the law. No, we got it last week, Ramara. This just came, this just came today. Let me, let me go get it.
Well, I think, my personal opinion is that attaching it to the vape law isn't the right way to go about it.
I agree.
I'm fine with that.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good compromise.
And I think we have a better potential of having it stick, even if the governor's legislation passes, than what if we tried to ban it outright.
I, I think you're on very solid ground with what you did with the vape law, and I think almost, uh, it's, um, follows that what you would be doing then with, uh, marijuana would fall within the same, I think, framework.
I agree, and we're not banning it, we're banning it within.
Yeah, we're regulating where.
Regulating where it can be sold, essentially.
Right. So, at, at the same time, I'd suggest, just as we did with the vape law, that we have a, a robust public hearing process, and we create a record for what we're doing and why.
Right. Well, I don't, if I remember correctly, nobody even came to the vape law one, but we'll see what happens with this one. Let's schedule.
It's gonna be telling.
Have a different crowd.
At Pleasantville, I think you were in favor, like, you know, if it showed up. Yeah, I know, we're gonna have a lot of high school kids too. Not just high school kids.
There is, yeah, there is, absolutely.
Let's face it, that's.
The high school kids aren't showing up for this one, right?
Right, right, this one's getting a lot of attention here.
They might show up.
Okay, um, so while we're waiting, cause Christine is just gonna make copies of that for the board. Um, uh, the Every Person's Connected, uh, committee has requested five hundred dollars, um, to be able to purchase tickets for the concert this week, um, as I think.
And donate them.
Yeah.
Donate them to, uh, the, the concert, as I think most people know, it's, it's a concert, chapel orchestras teaming up with the Every Person's Connected Committee, putting on a concert, and some, some of the, uh, kids, uh, adults with special needs are gonna be ushering, and others are gonna be performing in the concert, and they wanna be able to give out tickets to some of the, uh, other special needs adults that live in the area, to come to the concert to enjoy it.
Okay.
So, uh.
So there, there is a budget line, Rob doesn't need a re, a formal resolution, just to, to let the board know, and just a verbal okay that they're good to go with.
So the tickets, I think, if I'm not mistaken, are fifteen dollars each, but if you buy ten, it's a hundred bucks, so this would give them fifty tickets to give out.
It's not gonna sell out, as I, I haven't bought my ticket yet.
It's not gonna sell out, that's the part of the problem, it's not gonna sell out. But no, I mean, they, they, they should get okay, but it's not gonna sell out.
Well.
We'll, we'll get anybody in.
Why aren't they just giving the tickets away instead of needing money for it?
It's the same, it's a, it's the same thing, really, they have to, uh. I, I asked the same question, I went to their meeting last week, and they, uh, they, um, first with chapel orchestras, some of the members get paid, and, um.
Yes.
They, uh, they're hurting them with the sales. So they need, uh, they would, we would try to think of ways to generate sales, and then the idea came up that why don't we, uh, you know, try to, uh, invite people and, uh, buy tickets online?
Yeah, I mean, they were so certain, they, I thought they're going to all the, uh, special needs schools and having the parents come, but they were so certain it was gonna sell out.
Well, it hasn't, and the concert is, uh, in five days.
Yes.
It was definitely afterwards because they changed the language on it.
It's much more fun to play for an audience.
Exactly, and it'd be nice, it's, and you know, the truth is also that the more people that go there, I think the more people that are gonna be inspired and, uh, motivate to, uh, you know, to, to, to do more things like this.
Yes, it's, it's the way it is.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah, and state law, actually, the ancients, yeah, it's very odd, yeah.
No, it's, yeah. Chapel orchestras, they, uh.
Sorry, it, it's going through the vape law and, uh, correcting the spelling on marijuana.
It would've been better if the tickets are free, I think, no? I think.
What, what are they doing, would they take that out?
Than H.
Juana.
Juana.
I don't know, she doesn't, I don't wanna hear it in marijuana infused products, so I don't know, I think you have to figure it out.
Don't make references, the, yeah. So, uh, we've, yeah, handed out.
We wanna use marijuana and marijuana infused products, as we wanna do THC-based products.
Take a look at.
Because CBD and THC are to, totally different things.
You want him.
We gotta be careful also, there's something that, I know when I go to Colorado, they have, you know, these, they have these, uh, you know, these, the edibles, but they're not real edibles, they're ones that you could buy in a candy store. And it has THC, but doesn't have the stuff that give, you know, makes, you know, it doesn't have the, uh, the good THC.
It's got CBD, it's got the CBD, not the THC.
Right, right, exactly, it's got the, if you don't want candy store, so.
I can tell you, if we're like people with arthritis and things like that, it's, it's a wonder drug, yeah.
Right, it's. It's a wonder drug, yeah.
So I think what we could, and it's also, you go to any um Bodega or Seven Eleven now, they all have tea, uh CBD infused drinks, so I don't think that's what we need to cover.
Right, and that may be why, so, yeah.
I don't know the difference frankly. One is, one is got the sort of um, let's just put it, the mind altering properties, the sort of feel good mood altering properties.
Right, yes.
The other one is basically zero effect, it's like taking a supplement.
Yeah.
Sort of like Biotin or, you know, something like that, and what's an anti-inflammatory.
Is it one hemp based versus cannabis based?
They're all cannabis based, but what they've been able to do is they've been able to strip out, separate out.
Yeah, I thought.
It has to do with sex, it plants or something like that, or?
I don't know, it's it's the science, it's science, and so it's a little bit beyond me, but it's two separate different things, I think we need to be careful about that.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah.
So the next step would be, if everyone's good with the local, draft local law that's been introduced, the next step would be setting it down for a public hearing.
I think we should.
Yeah.
March twenty sixth.
Okay.
I thought we already did.
No, it's actually. I think the Instagram.
I think I heard in my newsletter that we did.
I thought we did.
I mean, it's.
No, we we didn't, no.
We did the Cooper Scoop one, and we did the uh, the Joe Borber one.
We we held it over because she didn't have all the uh.
I thought we did all three of those same.
Right.
So we're. We did two, yes.
Okay.
And we'll take and do that before we leave too. Alright, um, so epic, um, okay.
G I S and sidewalk presentation. So um, Hollow was just commenting before you came, did you, Hollow, did you ask Sabrina about the um, the drones? Do you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just wondering if there was a mapping project going on, cause there's been a bunch of drones sort of flying over my property, like two of them, and two at two different levels, sort of when, sort of these ever expanding arcs.
And maybe that's on pictometry.
County, we're doing the fly, gosh, mention the fly.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Flyovers. There was a flyover to update the county's pictometry, I don't know if they're doing it at this point in time, they typically don't do it in winter.
Really? Uh, cause I thought they'd do it before the leaves come down on the trees.
They do before the leaves come back on the trees, but the snow cover kind of.
Oh, it hadn't been snowing, the snow had melted.
It was, yeah, then it could've very well have been the county.
I was just fascinated, because the path was so regular, and the two of them were just like.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty cool. Coming soon. And how appropriate for us to bring, because Kellen is going to present to you our public facing G I S.
Right, can everyone hear me? Yeah, good, okay, great, usually not very loud, so um, I'm Kellen Cantrell, I'm the assistant planner here in the development department. Uh, I thought this was a funny graphic to begin with, you should get lost, G I S, all that goodness. So, yeah, I like, a little chuckle, a little chuckle, okay, so.
And we like to see.
Yeah, yes, humor is usually, yeah. It's tough. Yeah, humor is, you know, I mean, it's.
I embrace it.
It's subject matter.
Exactly, so I'm here to present on the publicly available geographic information system, G I S uh website uh that the town has recently made live. Uh, AKA Mapping Newcastle. So first off, uh what is G I S? So a very, very, very brief overview. This uh, this graphic gives a kind of basic idea, and I can demonstrate with these papers, the same principle, taking physical layers of data. So you can take streets, you can take parcel lines, you can take municipal boundary, you can take wetlands, and uh, let's say buildings. All, all that data and information onto one integrated two D map, so that's G I S. Google Maps, it's very similar. So Newcastle, what the, what layers are available, what information layers are available on the Newcastle website? Here's a quick snapshot of some uh, some major ones, and then there's a hundred plus more data sets of information available. So, let's get into where you can find the website.
This is the one that's on the county website?
No.
No, this is the town's very own, specific to us.
So he has hoarded data from the county, cause that looks like all the county.
It's coordinated, it's coordinated with county data. All of these systems are pulling off of all of the same databases.
And we have some that are specific to the town, like the tax parcel, uh data layer is much more updated than the county.
That the county doesn't have.
Okay.
Even though it's not up to date by the minute. So we'll jump into that, but first off, where do you find this? You go to the Town of Newcastle website, mynewcastle.org. You scroll down, and it's the third one right here, Mapping Newcastle, Newcastle G I S, you click on that, and then here we are. Here's the homepage, it's live, it's publicly available. Um, so here is the town in relation to the neighboring municipalities, um, there's the Millwood hamlet and the Chappaqua hamlet, and this is what you'll see. So, a couple of notes before we get started, one, uh, this is for general planning purposes only, this is not a survey map, this is not an engineering tool. Um, and we will not market it as.
Disclaimer.
Disclaimer, and we're.
There will, there will be a disclaimer that pops up when you first come here.
There will be a disclaimer that we're working on as of today.
Disclaimer, right, there you go.
Uh, second, uh, all of the lines and all of the colors and all this information you see cannot be altered, so it is locked, you can only layer it on top of one another. So, those two things out of the way, we'll get down to the fun stuff. So I'll start off on this right hand toolbar, if you see where my mouse is, uh, so we have a draw select tool, a measuring tool, a switch uh base map tool, which we'll get into in a second. There's uh points of interest, you click on those, it'll zoom right into them, you can share this link, uh, this map with uh someone through email or whatnot. Uh, you can identify, and then you can trash all the graphics that you just created with this draw select tool. So let's start with the uh base map, so let's say I don't wanna, I don't wanna use this ba- base map, I wanna use an imagery base map. So you click on imagery, and anything, another note, anything highlighted in yellow, that's the tool you're using. So, if you wanna know when this map was updated, it's updated in twenty sixteen. So we can do topographic, we can do dark gray canvas, there are dozens of these, I could keep going, but I won't. Some of them are pretty visually stunning, if they will load.
What are ortho photos?
Ortho photos, let's check that out. So it's uh, it's like an aerial photo, uh, digital surface model and digital elevation model, so, that one's pretty.
Oh wow, that's cool.
Oh, that's so cool.
Yeah.
That is really cool.
So you can see where the reservoir, the reservoir is up there.
Highlands and valleys.
So, moving on, so I'm gonna stick with the topographic map. So that's this top hand toolbar here, so now, let's say you wanna search for a parcel, um, and you can search uh three different ways. You can search by legal address, you can search by uh parcel ID, section, block and lot, uh or you can search by owner's last name. So two hundred S, we'll type in, hopefully it will, no, that's, it's a little slow today.
I think you have to hit the search button, no?
No, no, we're in the search, let's try town, of, oh, search failed, oh no, it's the first time it's ever happened. Of course, right now, this happens.
So again, it's a very memory intensive program.
It's a very memory intensive program. Alright, I've done like twenty run-throughs, and this is the first time I've taken.
Oh, it's quite all right.
It's alright.
So, let's, let's get into uh some of the, some of the layers here, I'll just zoom into, oh geez, come on.
I think with that last one, I think maybe it was asking if you in the um, like the number four, not the uh, like the uh.
Here we go, alright, there we go, it's coming up now, two hundred. It's not gonna work, okay, we'll just draw on the map where we wanna go, sorry about that, sorry about that.
I can zoom down.
Let's draw a little box down here. And there is a lot of information on this map, so the more information you add to it, the slower it gets.
This is a no.
So.
So we haven't even added any inform, any information yet, so, let's say, you wanna know the, so here's town hall. So, this was the search I was gonna make, so the town hall property is right here, includes the parking lot, right here, the train station parking lot.
Right.
So let's say, you wanna put some layers on this map, some information to understand where the rivers are, where the zoning is, you'll go to the layers function right here. And then there are all these layers that you can add to the map, you just check the little box, and they'll appear on the map. Um, all of the layers of information that have Westchester County or New York State behind them. That information is updated, maintained, um, updated and maintained by that munis, by that um, government, so by that uh, sorry.
Entity.
Entity, yes, sorry, by that entity, so we don't have to update any of that information, it goes directly to our website once it's updated by them. So, really the ones that we update are underneath the New Newcastle, and so if we wanna add anything, we can later on. But right now, we're gonna stick with uh, we'll look at the lakes and rivers, so we'll check that box. And so, it appears right here, so we can move the map a little bit, we'll take the identify button, and we'll move that over a little bit. So you see there's a stream right here, on the other side of Rec Field, and the school's over here, and the library is right here, just to give you a little geographic reference. This is the stream next to the Metro North, and there's a little brook right here, uh called Tersia Brook. Uh, and I think that's where the Bell middle schoolers do their science projects and collect water.
You know, the Saulos government.
And so, what about zoning? Let's say you wanna know what zoning you're in, we calls, at least a few calls a day about zoning. So you click on the zoning map, and it appears here on the uh, on the map, and it shows you we're in the planned industrial district. And so, if you wanted to understand what your setbacks are, what your coverage limits are, then you would take the planned industrial district, you would look it up, and the E code for the Town of Newcastle to understand that. Hopefully, we will stop failing and we'll move on, so.
Wait, how did it go directly to the code?
No, I think he had.
So I have an.
Oh, 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 okay.
But you can get there through our website too.
It would be nice.
But it might, it might, it might be good, I can't, if you could do it, have a pop up, because it seems like you can add a pop up, that if someone clicks zoning,
I, I didn't see it.
you know, you can click to the town zoning code or something like.
Would that be great?
That'd be really useful.
That would be useful, you're correct.
Well, we'll note it, and we'll talk to the.
No, it seems like it should be sort of at least something there, because usually if somebody's down in there, they wanna.
Great idea.
I agree.
If you have the maps overlap, it should be easier to link it up.
Yeah, so.
I'm not a coder though.
So really, the best way to learn is to jump in there and uh, you know, click around. So there's one more function that I wanna show you all, uh, we'll click off of that, and it'll be on this last toolbar on the right over here. These are the spatial tools, so you can zoom in, zoom out, like I did earlier, um, you can zoom to the full extent, show the whole town. You can zoom to the next extent, or back to where you were, uh, you can draw the, uh, draw a little box on the map, and it'll zoom into that area. So, let's zoom in a little bit closer into town hall. Uh, you can pan on the map, which moves the map around, uh, you can do a Bing street view, no Google street view here, sorry. Um, bird's eye view, and then pictometry, which we spoke of earlier. Um, and so, you click on pictometry, you're utilizing that tool, it's it's in yellow, you click on town hall. This is probably my favorite tool, this is, like we said earlier, the uh, the flyover that the county does, it gives you a pretty up to date photo.
Gotta look at the resolution on that.
And the resolution.
It's pretty amazing, well.
Amazing, and so, a few things about this.
Holy crap.
Number one, it gives you the date of when the photo was taken.
It's, it's been since, yeah, it's had construction.
And it has been updated, because usually whenever I did the run-throughs, about a week ago, it was April, when these were, so.
It's the, it's the drone. It's, it's when we had the uh contaminated, the uh, the spoils from our excavation.
Yep, so this is from December fourth of twenty eighteen, that's great.
The tar's over.
We have evidence, we do.
Yep, there we go.
Gets even better, guys, listen.
So, we can turn the compass here with the arrow arrows, you can, and then it updates the data when that photo was taken, so maybe it wasn't taken in December.
It's on my card.
My page.
That's amazing, that's amazing.
So then, when you go all the way around, you see this, the uh, the field over here.
It's a weekend.
And then there are different.
That's Tuesday, Sunday, Saturday.
So now, now it's back to the same view, but it's from April, so if you zoom in or you zoom out, the date might change, um.
Remember that van was in the parking lot, that van is there, sorry.
Yeah, forever, yeah.
And so, there are also these, these buttons, um, where it's from the same angle, but it's kind of a different view. Uh, so you can look at those as well, the, the right and the left button, um, you can add the street layers, so you know what street you're looking at out here, what street is this on here?
Going to look at my house right after this meeting.
So that sounds really cool, and then you add contours as well onto this uh really high res photo, and I like to call this the Back to the Future uh feature.
Yeah.
Uh, you scroll down here, and you can look at town hall in two thousand and seven. Look at that green grass, and the photo was taken in April of two thousand and seven.
Yes, in April of two thousand and seven.
So we can go back, we can look at the different views, the same as the uh, the other one, uh, as.
Think I'm freaking out.
Twenty eighteen.
It looks good.
So, let's say, hey, did I have a pool on my property in two thousand and seven?
Look at the, and even the resolutions changed.
We can go to twenty ten, what's it look like in twenty ten?
Let's go to twenty uh twenty.
Just taken in December.
It's been raining.
The county is trying twenty twenty right now, as Hollow has witnessed.
That's the next episode. So.
Yeah.
Back to twenty eighteen, we have it covered up, it's December again, so.
Eggs.
And so that's pretty much the website, um, if.
Very cool.
Any of you have any questions or want any, want any further instruction on how to use the website, uh, feel free to contact me. Or if you have any questions now, I'm free.
So it even has things like election districts, which is really helpful, cause we get a ton of questions in the clerk's office, like what's my election district?
It does have election districts.
Where am I, so people can actually go and see on the basis of where they live, where their, you know, what's the number.
That's the numbers.
They can go on their house, like up their election districts.
You know, you're like, where do you live, but which number are you?
There's additional layers, district boundaries, election districts right there.
So we actually, yeah, they, they. Yeah.
So, and this is connected right to.
We'll click on election districts, yeah.
Let's hope that we don't get an error message.
Click on election districts, see what happens.
So I, I will tell you, I did link my daughter's fourth grade teacher to this website, cause they were doing landforms, and she shared it with her entire
We're in five.
Oh, five, that's dope.
group in school, so they're all using our information for their learning on their smartphone.
That's probably why I crashed going, cause all the third grade, second grade, I just like.
The same usage.
Let me see my.
Usage, last one for.
Does, does this slow down if uh, if you have a lot of users on the system?
It should not, because it's a web based uh map, the map will slow down if you have like an aerial base map, and then you add ten more layers on top of that. Cause you have all that information and your computer can't think that fast.
How are you serving it then, you're using it uh?
It's in the cloud.
Yeah, it's, it's, it has its own space in the cloud, so we don't uh, we, we have a company that maintains the website, if there are any issues, they notify us and. No issue so far.
But you're also, you're also consuming this as a service from the state and the county anyway, so the bulk of the data isn't, isn't local.
It's just links. It's not.
I know, I understand, but generally, slow, slow is the, one of the greatest problems we're hearing from both folks, and anything you can do to. This is much more sophisticated than this town deserves, I love it.
I think it's well deserved.
Hey.
Yeah, I know, I think it has offended us.
I didn't offend you, I just think that uh, it's terrific.
Should we move on to sidewalks, because we're on a roll?
That's where we go.
Stay near our journey. Check out the maps.
So, we're gonna continue the discussion that we started a couple of weeks ago, I guess, when we started talking about sidewalks and sidewalk connections. Um, we have some maps later on the table, and we promised that we would use the lovely um aerial photography and mapping that we could put up on the screen. And really what we're trying to do tonight is to kind of walk you through the different types of sidewalk connections that we've identified, both from the comprehensive plan driven sidewalks, as well as sidewalks that um, you folks have talked about, that others have talked about. And we wanted to talk about your priorities, kind of what you liked this night, if there were other areas that you wanted to identify. So we're gonna walk you through each of these areas, A through H, I believe, um, on the maps. Um, and kind of give you a sense of what we've looked at so far, and then we'll talk about the next steps.
Okay.
Alright, you wanna come over?
Come on, and we'll go steal a peek.
Okay.
We'll be friends.
What do we got here?
Yep.
Okay, so this is where our.
This is uh. Okay, so let, so let me point your attention to the screen, cause we're gonna give you some framework for this.
Ah, aha.
Okay, so, one of the, one of the action items in the comprehensive plan, we're to develop a comprehensive sidewalk plan. And this is really to try and identify sidewalks, some of which are actually under engineering feasibility today, and are, and we'll talk about those. And then others are for the future, trying to do, you know, capital improvement planning into the future, not next year, maybe five years from now. So just to give you a sense, in the comprehensive plan, we talk about promoting walkability, promoting development in areas with existing infrastructure. Coordinating town infrastructure planning with regional infrastructure planning, so in relation to the North County Bike, Bike Trail. What do we have in relation to that trailway to connect with the Millwood Hamlet? So these are all considerations that the comprehensive plan said, think about these, moving forward. This is the slide of our current sidewalk conditions, we have, we have a great deal of sidewalks already, most of our sidewalks are concentrated in our hamlets. We have incomplete connections within and between the hamlets, our schools are, schools have sidewalks, they're not really connected anywhere. Um, we're missing walkable connections to our parks, we have a, a, a great number of parks and sanctuaries that you all have to go to in a car. Um, and, you know, again, that regional connection, the multimodal infrastructure. The town has been engaged with Mogo, the Millwood Austin Go program. The town has been engaged with Mogo, the Millwood Austin Go program, where we identified bike pathways. Um you know, we need more of those on all sides of our community.
So Kellen, you wanna talk a little bit about the base mapping?
Sure, so we uh we did base mapping um and mapped out the existing sidewalks, as you see in front of you, this is the exact same map. And then the with the Chappaqua and Hamlets, Chappaqua and Millwood Hamlets, uh the public school properties. Um and the uh county and state roadways uh annotated in there. And then the approved future connections, as Sabrina was talking uh to the engineering feasibility study that's already underway in Millwood. Um though that's annotated on the map, I think it's in green. Uh and then I think it's A and B on the map, yep. And then the town board and residential input, uh Roaring Brook Road, Douglas Road and Mill River Road, so it should be Saw Mill River Road, sorry. And so these are the poten- potential connections uh listed out, uh the comprehensive plan directed connections and then the town board and other requested connections, um.
Wait a minute, Roaring Brook Road?
Those, these are all proposed.
Proposed.
Everything other than the yellow.
The yellow is, yeah, there's a key on the left over there that shows you.
We're agreeing. No, no, I understand the key, I'm just looking at Roaring Brook Road.
I just, yeah, it's fine, sorry, can we back up for a second, the green that's in Millwood is not the letter B?
This says under construction.
What under construction and approved?
What's approved in those maps?
No, no, no. Right, so we have a.
It's all the way up and all the way.
So up here, here's uh.
Alright, here we go, split it all the way to.
It goes past Shingle House?
Yeah, there we go. A and B.
Okay, A and B.
Mm-hmm, section A is at the top there and then B is um Mill Millwood Road there. So these are under engineering feasibility study right now.
Sorry, so. Wait, it's under feasibility.
Oh, you take it up to.
But the engineering department is currently reviewing, working with a consultant to review the engineering feasibility.
Not.
It's not, yes.
Of those areas that are identified as engineering feasibility, so much of these areas are still in planning. That has taken the next level of analysis, where we've hired an outside consultant to actually tell us what it would take to get it done. Jill, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so we um we, yeah, and under.
It's it's. It's not under construction, it's like under review or, yeah.
No, no, no.
Feasibility.
Feasibility, not feasibility.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm, you know, when the public looks at this map. This has not been approved yet, this is being studied, that is a different story.
Nope. It, yes, this, yes, this is.
Right, this is a public, this is a public map.
So there, so what's been a what's been approved and what's the subject of the Millwood um sidewalk renovation study is.
This is for you.
Um in front of uh De Chico's parking lot.
Yep.
Um and it's gonna go around the corner to where Millwood Park is, right, right up there, that yellow, that's been approved. Um we have asked NV five to look at the feasibility of extending it up that way.
Thought we were going and going up to Shingle House.
Were we, no, no. Yes, yes, both.
Uh under approved was up to Shingle House, no?
No. No, it only got as far as Millwood Park.
Right here.
That's the five hundred thousand and the five hundred thousand matching, yep, that's where we are.
Right here. Was this right here?
Because it turns out that in front of Rockies, that whole sidewalk is that whole area is completely destroyed, so we were we were replacing all of that.
That's good.
Um and then we asked them for the feasibility to go fo- what would that be, to go north?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
North.
So what what does that mean to to a resident in Millwood, what does that mean that they're doing a feasibility study?
They're looking at the cost and the technical feasibility, how many takings, how much private property versus public right of way. What um the cost would be to actually construct it, all of the easement agreements that may need to be needed. We would, the engineering feasibility analysis looks at topography slope, how can you make connections? If putting in a sidewalk is gonna cut off somebody's driveway, we need to know that before we even begin to consider putting monies behind it to construct it. So that is what that analysis does.
They also look at both sides of the street, just saying like if there's wetlands on one side versus another, we all all of our sidewalks have to be ADA compliant. So if there's a bitter slope on one side versus another, we would take a look at that as well. Um the, okay, so there's that section along there, we've.
And so there's no funding that's been identified for this as of yet?
No, and actually, we would need a feasibility study first to be able to prepare for a grant, this would be the groundwork for going out and seeking funds.
Right. This comprehensive sidewalk plan is kind of that foundation. What we would do, so we wanted to discuss this with all of you, kind of get your blessing, maybe get your priorities. If you are are interested in providing that to us, we would then do a desktop analysis of these sidewalk areas. So what we have not done by means of a desktop analysis for this, which is currently being done by a consulting engineering firm. Solely because they are already doing work here, we would do for all of these areas and kind of identify where are their slopes, where are their wetlands? You know, how many trees do we need to take down, is it better on the on the east side, the west side, the north side, the south side? We kind of do that preliminarily preliminary desktop analysis based on tools that we have. And try and get one step ahead, and then that way, when there's funding that comes down, there's planning monies. There's design monies and there's construction monies. We will be in a position, based on this comprehensive sidewalk plan, to start submitting pro- uh projects. Based on the work that we're doing now to get us further in that funding category.
Yeah. So we wouldn't have to apply for planning funding, we would be able to jump to design funding?
So that's the intent. Yes, abso- absolutely, we we, any grant that comes across uh my desk, Kellen's desk, Jill's desk, Christina's desk. We always examine in relation to what can we do with this money, can we, is it achievable that we could get it?
And so I'm sorry, I just have one more question before we get off at this point. The reason that we we are already at the point of feasibility study with Millwood. As opposed to, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about Douglas Road, other locations in town, the reason that that work is accelerated ahead of. The other work that we're talking about today, the other points of interest for sidewalks.
Yep.
Is that there is an existing sidewalk project happening in Millwood.
Yes, on your construction.
Correct.
Right, and so they were literally in the area and they were trying to figure out as part of the monies that the five hundred thousand with the five hundred thousand matching.
Thank you.
How far could we go up the street?
I see.
So at some point, we ran out of money for the for the matching, five hundred and five hundred. So we had to pause the project at that point. So since we had done some of the preliminary work up the approved a hundred, we asked them to continue it and just say, well, you know, don't throw out that work. Let's just continue it and see what it would.
I ju- I just wanna make sure that when you do the costing, I think there is like a natural connection point, which is Shingle House Road making the corner. And heading back into town versus connecting up to Hidden Hollow, the way to see the advantage, there's a number of houses in there.
Okay.
Are you breaking it into like A one, A two or something like that, so that?
We haven't, we haven't gotten as far as I is is collecting costs, okay, so so we're.
No, but I mean conceptually, like I think there is like a, you know, it one goes extends beyond the hamlet. You know, and there's definitely um. You can't see it here, but that's the Millwood Business Center, which is where what I'm gonna call A two is, and as I said, there's a lot of people walking.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
From that business center to the bus stop.
Yeah, absolutely, well, and that's all looking at county questions.
So, but I think, but I just think there's sort of different purposes associated with them. Um whereas the other one, which then goes and connects Gedney, thank God, finally, at least it's on the map.
Yes.
Yes.
And then also West Orchard School.
Right.
Yes.
So um, yeah, the only thing is, yeah, so there.
So 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 again, you know, exam- there there is some more high profile sidewalks due to their connection of public places and. And places, you know, so this would, in a funding manner. For outside funding, this would seem much more desirable due to all of its connections than this would. However, that bus stop and this business center will give high scoring to this one. So so again, it's really a combination of factors. We know the sidewalk to Gedney, we're coming close to a lot of people's properties, there's walls that need to be constructed due to topography. So this might be a higher cost than this one. This may satisfy all those boxes and so does this one, this one may be more easily fundable.
Right, but I think in terms of sidewalk, which is what you want, is ultimately connectivity that's used by more people rather than less people.
Yes. Correct.
You know, then one is much more um.
Right, and so when we get to the point of of kind of writing those grant applications, we, you know, we we will come back.
Yeah.
This is our first stop with you guys, we will come back to you after we do some of the desktop analysis and give you kind of the. The the net net of what we found out and it may change your direction of what you wanna see happen.
Okay, and then one of the other questions, which I didn't see on here, but if, you know, in theory, D, right, which is going along one twenty.
Yep, here it is.
Um is nice because it also connects the high, you know, connects Roaring Brook.
Right.
Um. High uh middle school, but you guys have made the connection to go down Roaring Brook, which is a tough, steep. Um windy.
When you say you guys.
I mean, however, I'm gonna say, it's a very complicated road, even as a driver, it's hard to see around the corner.
Yes.
Yes.
Who knows what about that?
What?
And I don't know where you'd have to take property from everybody, cause the road's not wide enough.
Well, I mean, even now, I go at fifteen miles an hour.
Which may make this connection not practical.
But one of the questions I have is if I like the idea, whether and you can tell me whether that's high scoring.
Right.
I'm working on it.
Yeah.
But I like the idea of having walkability to the schools in general.
Mm-hmm, yes, absolutely.
Um and whether it's the kids using them or whether it's used for jogging or whether it's just the idea that the schools are connected to the community. Rather than being isolated campuses or disconnected from the community.
Well, that's part of.
The plan.
Nobody's gonna walk down this way across the Saw Mill heart quack.
No, I'm talking about uh Seven Bridges. So.
Seven Bridges isn't connected, Seven Bridges is out this way.
Right, but Seven Bridges is a heavily walked and jogged road as it stands, not in rush hour.
Yes, so Seven Bridges is not on this plan.
Right.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Again, why we are here talking.
But why why we fo- I mean, I understand the benefit of connecting schools, but should we be, our main focus be connecting sidewalks to our business hamlets? So more people can walk to town? And communicate.
So so again, these are your priorities.
Get schools in there too.
Here's the existing one twenty sidewalk.
I know, my main priority should be trying to get people to walk to town.
Right, but but Ro- I mean.
So, so what's interesting along the one twenty sidewalk is is that um the county, as we know. Has already um earmarked funds for an engineering study to be able to extend the county trunk lineup one twenty.
Yeah, but it's it's only to.
To Wagon Road.
Wagon Road, but that, right, that's not, it's actually not all that much further than.
But it gets us further than we are today.
It gets us further than we are now and it also gets us halfway to.
Right, it gets us like.
Part of Markus, yeah, right.
Well. You know what I mean, like it's not.
But there is a sidewalk on, not not by wagon ro- road.
It goes to Markport today.
No, right, it doesn't, it doesn't go there.
Right, right, yeah, but it's pretty close to that, right?
Yeah.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Right, so if if that road is being excavated and ripped up, one of the things that we could ask the county to do is. You know, we would like them to pay for some of that sidewalk, um and if there is going to be a further sewer extension that goes up. Then we would want to piggyback sidewalks along whatever sewer extension is um, you know, is is going to be extended.
But can we do that also in Millwood if we talk about getting the uh?
Absolutely, yes.
The random farms hype it up?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yes. Yes, so so one of the the next steps is to compare these sidewalk routes with existing utilities. And potentially future planned utilities that we have been made aware of. And try to determine where we can have co-applications and partners in our endeavor. If we have a comprehensive sidewalk plan that puts this on paper. It gives us a lot more strength when going to New York State DOT asking for amended codes. Or amended standards, if you will, so we can continue this one twenty sidewalk. Okay, cause today, there's regu- requirements of five foot snowshelves. In addition to ADA requirements, we can handle ADA requirements, we cannot handle within the our roadways, the five foot snow shelf.
Well, they also require us to do the taking then.
Yeah.
Correct, and the taking, so so those.
And I asked them like two years ago, they they weren't, nothing to do.
Those are state policies that we really need to work to undo in order to fulfill this objective. Okay, and and to have a document that says, here is our comprehensive sidewalk plan, these are the sidewalks that the town stands behind. Gives us so much more weight, because it's not Paula, you in a meeting with DOT saying, I want the sidewalk here. You can say, the town adopted this comprehensive sidewalk plan, we need you to work with us. We can give you a five foot snow shelf at every intersection with a roadway, a town roadway, but we cannot do the entire road. Due to the topography and the amount of takings you want us to have. You know, that helps inform that discussion and it makes it reasonable to go back to getting what we have today, that one twenty sidewalk.
Um a couple of the questions, so one thing I don't see reflected on this in terms of priorities that I would like to add. Is the continuation on Bedford Road headed the other way towards Temple Bethel. Do you wanna go through that map?
Um even though we already have the Greeley Trail we're supposed to go back?
So a lot of people wanna be able to go from the fire station, basically, where the sidewalk ends today.
Oh, I see, so yep. Yep.
And be able to go to Pleasantville on a sidewalk without having to go down through town. A lot of people over on the side of town, runners and peddled drivers would like to be able to get to Pleasantville on foot.
Okay.
Okay, Pleasant Pleasantville isn't going to put a sidewalk on, you know that right? They had a problem with with Washington Avenue?
Well, this wouldn't go to Washington Avenue, it would, well, I mean, it would, I guess it would stop at our town line then, on one seventeen.
You're saying they had a problem, they didn't wanna even put sidewalks on Washington Avenue?
Yeah, because evidently they were they were parking easements that they were giving to people. Because that was another thing that we were working, we had approached Pleasantville about. Um you know, it just seemed like a natural extension since we were putting the sidewalks.
Uh-huh.
You know, with the library, to the library, just seems down Washington Avenue to be able to go into town would work, and evidently there was some.
Uh-huh.
Especially those people moving it to Washington Avenue.
Yes. Don't worry about staying here, and then get one seventeen, but then you stop here.
I'm talking about, yeah.
That was.
But I guess it's to there or it would be to Temple Bethel, but.
Wouldn't worry about.
This section's, oh, you see a lot of people walking here, right?
Yeah, a lot of people, yeah.
Um the other question I have is, uh G, here's the chapline, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we have it ending at Chestnut Oaks, which is a further conversation for another time.
Right, at the street.
But but my, at the street, but my question then is.
At North Greeley.
Are there any gaps here along North Greeley before you get into Chestnut Oaks? So like between, this is Maple and this is Bishop.
No, goes all the way to.
We go to Bishop now, right?
Right.
Just but then the sidewalk.
But then does the sidewalk continue past Bishop?
Maple.
Yep, it does.
I think it does go all the way to Chestnut Oaks.
It does, definitely.
It does, it it goes all the way up, I've looked at it many times.
Yeah.
That's why they, that's why they wanted it.
Okay.
It's in horrible condition.
So this this then gives to.
Goes all the way up.
Yep.
That's why Chestnut Oaks wanted us to extend it on North Greeley, so that they can walk to town.
Right. Right.
And other people wanna walk to town, so.
So then I think maybe we should take a look at this, what's existing here, cause I think maybe we should show them that what's existing here goes all the way to chapline. So that that would be a continuous.
Okay.
That would be the connection there.
Continuous line, right? Yeah, cause it goes higher than what's drawn here in yellow.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to ask, is if it does.
Right, doesn't the yellow extends basically up to?
Yeah, to to the beginning of Chestnut Oaks, it goes right to the uh.
Yeah.
Is that a private sidewalk or a public sidewalk?
It is, I think it is private development.
No.
I think it's private.
The the yellow is a public sidewalk, so if it's a private development, is that a public sidewalk in there or a private sidewalk?
Once you hit, see that, it's private, so.
No, it's a private sidewalk.
So these are, the yellow is on the public.
So so we're showing public areas.
So our public sidewalk extends to their private sidewalk.
Public, on the public.
Correct, yes.
That's why it says connection point to private sidewalk.
Then there, maybe you have a new color, pink, something for private sidewalks.
Yes. Private sidewalk.
So that it's actually clear that there is.
We're nearing up to here and we're gonna.
Connection.
Connection.
We can do that, we have.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't pray this out.
There aren't that many of them, but. There can't be too many.
So Douglas Road, let's, I don't suppose you layered this on this groovy new interactive map that you've got, have you?
The public GIS?
Yeah.
No, we have our own internal, um which has many more layers.
I just just, I'm just sort of curious, like the F, the purpose of the F spur.
The purpose of the S, the reason the F spur is identified is not due to com-. Cut the comprehensive plan directed sidewalks connections.
Okay.
This was a much talked about public request, town board identified sidewalk.
Well, it's be- it's be- it's it's when you say town board, it's residents reaching out to the town board.
Yes, correct, correct.
Because just, well, the thing is, you have the sidewalk on one twenty.
Asking for a sidewalk.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we want, yeah.
And Doug Doug is a river, pretty much parallel to it.
And we get, we get calls, we get calls too.
We get calls.
That's why Mill Mill River is on there, because someone emailed us.
We don't have many properties, does it connect to anything, does they butt end or be?
They wanna walk to town too, these people.
No.
These are, these are smaller lots, so there's a lot of homes over there and I would advise.
Understand. I I I I understand.
And there's a lot, and there's a lot of side streets too, but the problem is if you actually drive that road, and that's the Hollis point about the.
Yeah.
It's also windy and narrow.
The maps and the GIS stuff, it's it's actually easier said than done, if you actually drive the street, you see it's a.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, and. That is the next. Well, and that is the next step.
It's revenue, yeah.
That is the next step, is to really identify how much of a property owner's front yard do we need to take in order to put in the sidewalk?
Someone.
How many trees is it possible with topography, are we talking about retaining walls, you know, what are the?
I I I'm just gonna say it, it's, um, I think that if we have to prioritize it, like it's great to have everybody's wish list on the map,
Weddlands.
but I think, you know, the comp plan driven connectivity has gotta have a higher priority
Okay.
in terms of where your time and energy is expended to achieve the maximum results.
Does everyone agree with that?
But why, I don't, see what I don't understand is why this would not be a comp plan priority, because it's a road.
Doesn't connect to anything.
That it it does, it connects to downtown Chapakoa, it absolutely connects Douglas.
Which road? Douglas.
It goes to downtown Chapakoa, there's already sidewalks by the duck pond, and Douglas would connect right to those sidewalks.
Yeah, but there's lots of roads that already can connect to the sidewalks that aren't here, we have one group of people who've requested a sidewalk for their neighborhood, I know lots of people.
No, it's not, it's not, David Douglas is a major road that's.
I I know where Douglas is, I'm just saying is it just feels like I'd love to know how many properties were impacted and just sort of what the dead end butt end is, it just feels, and the same thing with Roaring Brook Road, I think the feasibility of walking on Roaring Brook Road safely, cuz even now driving, you know, I'm at fifteen miles an hour going around the corners, because I can't see a thing, and the road is barely wide enough for two cars.
So the only thing I wanna throw out is, um, when we go through this, it may be interesting just to note, what is a town road? What do we have control over, so we would have to.
Mm-hmm, that's true, that's true, yeah.
So, you know, although everybody would love, you know, one twenty and um
One seventeen.
and and the one seventeen, one thirty-three, the connection to to Getney, we went out there years ago with New York State DOT saying to them, it is ridiculous that we don't have a connection from the North County Trailway to Getney Park that's right up this road, and they literally said to us, you're not gonna be able to do it, and I'll tell you why. That the um, the New York State DOT will not allow any retaining walls on their property, so when you take that drive, not only is the grade working against you, in that you need to be able to take and relocate all of those retaining walls, five foot snow shelf, four foot sidewalk, and retain.
I I understand, we're gonna have to work work to get those things changed, but I'm also thinking that maybe the sidewalk should be on the other side of the street.
No, 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 no.
Well, well, part of our, so so these lines mean nothing as far as what side of the street, these are lines in the area of where the sidewalk should go.
So that you. Yeah.
Part of the next desktop analysis is really look at what makes the most sense. And we will be looking at how many property owners have to give up property to put in the Douglas sidewalk. Can we feasibly do it within a wetland, how much wall, what, you know, how many trees are we taking down? You know, we're gonna do those generalized numbers and bring that back to you, you know, so that you can have a sense of the impacts associated with the location of the sidewalks.
But are you studying all of these, or do you want us to give you the priority?
Well, I was, we were looking for your priorities.
Well, I mean, I have to say, you know, I know there are multiple, multiple challenges with it, but I really continue to feel that one seventeen going up to um Chapakoa Crossing needs to be a priority, and it's not just for, you know, convenience, and it's not just for, you know, recreation, or bringing people to a a um shopping area to and from to shopping areas. You know, we have a major safety problem right now along that road. People are, now that the retail has opened up there at Chapakoa Crossing, they are walking along that road, and we're trying to solve it with, you know, the shuttle and increasing the hours on the shuttle, and you know, there there are various ways that we're trying to address it, but that that one to me feels like it has to be a priority simply because we've got a safety issue that's.
But the chapline will address it.
See, I agree with you in concept, I think the easier way to accomplish that is with the chapline.
Exactly.
Because you're not taking all that property, it's not on this main windy narrow road, and it's doing the same exact thing.
You know, if you if you remove the, look, you know, the
Yeah, I think.
if you move some of the con- if you move some of the controversy of people that are, you know, the property rights, which are legitimate things, don't get me wrong, but
It's easier to do.
if you if you think about the chapline, it it accomplishes so many goals. It's connecting two business centers, it it's basically allowing people to walk safely from Chapakoa Crossing to downtown Chapakoa and vice versa. It's uh, it's rec- it's recreation, because you're gonna have like, there's so many trails, you could, people could walk to it to go to school, Bell School, people can walk to it to go to the high school,
From Bell to Greeley.
people can walk to it to go to the commuter station, I mean, there's so many, it 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 checks off so many boxes.
I think that, but I think the, I think the, I think the safety concern that already has, which is something that maybe needs to be quantified, that if we are having a lot, I mean,
It's just ea- I think it's easier to deal with, man, yes.
in theory, you know, the chapline would be great and could be a higher priority, but in reality, you've got a huge population that's east of one seventeen, not sort of on the west side of one seventeen, so if what's ending up happening is the, if the reality is, is that people are actually walking one seventeen in numbers to actually have a safety issue, that's different than which one is the cheapest or which one is gonna be the, you know, least expensive.
These numbers, I have seen people walking on one seventeen, but I don't think it's, it's not neighbors, it's really the people who are working at Chapakoa Crossing
I don't think, I don't think it's folks walking from.
Right.
Who connect.
Yeah.
were trying to get to the train station at night, I've seen them recently, it's not neighbors, you don't get.
Okay.
It's a big gap.
We're work, we're working on it.
They're driving.
They're shutters.
Yeah.
We're doing, we're working the bus, but four hundred homes would be connected to downtown Chapakoa with this chapline. Now, those are not people that are walking right now, those are people that are like Lisa, she's one of those four hundred homes, she would not be walking on one seventeen, she'd be driving, but if you had the chapline, she might actually be walking.
And you'd get this, I mean, you'd get all these neighborhoods, because you'd get all of this, which are on this side.
They were, and they're, I mean, it's tons of neighborhoods, but that's not part of the sidewalk doing.
Yeah.
Whatever directions it is.
East.
Well, it it is part of the sidewalk thing. It it is in the sense of you guys identifying your priorities, not not necessarily that your priority is gonna move forward or move off, but to give us a sense, I mean, that safety concern is something that we can incorporate into this project.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and you know, it does beckon how many people are using it, you know, the the better route, more safer route is to take the pedestrian off the road and focus on this.
Right.
Again, more um negotiation power, maybe not the best word, when talking to Westchester County to put something over their trunk line, when asking for county dollars to assist.
Right, yes, sure. I mean, I think we should pursue both the, both options.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if I had to make a priority, mine would be D and G.
Maybe these building on both.
Right, not necessarily the both of those.
Because I like D, G for the reasons we just discussed, which is the chapline, and I like D because that would really connect the downtown Chapakoa hamlet to Roaring Brook Elementary School, and then take it out all the way to Millwood. So those would be my priorities, cuz that would connect those two business hamlets there, and then actually you could, if you really wanted to take a nice long walk and those were done, you could potentially walk from Millwood, West Orchard, all the way down to Bell, and then up to to uh the Horace Greeley, and you could walk to Grafflin also with tho- just with those two roads.
I I would suggest the chapline and then doing more sidewalks in Millwood. I think we're already putting in new sidewalks in Millwood, I think we should extend it to uh.
Can you use letters?
A and B.
A and B, exactly, and honestly, what I wanted to do with one of those maps right here, you know, if we could figure out a way, I mean, I've walked this, and I don't think it's possible, but if there's a way to connect,
Yeah.
Yeah.
you know, go through Schuman to get to Getney, now, I don't think it's possible, but I think that's something to explore.
I I think it is possible, if con- it's absolutely possible, people are already cutting through anyways.
Yeah. I don't think it's Con Ed.
No, no, but they're already cutting through and walking the Con Ed property.
Those are little houses, if we can buy one of these houses that are for, if it's there for sale.
Schumann's where the um.
Granite is on the back, right?
The granite phase.
Yes, that that's exactly where it is, it's terraced, yeah, yeah.
Very, very, it's very steep stuff, you wouldn't be able to really bike, you have to.
Okay. Well, no, you could definitely bike, I mean, people are already doing it, it's already pretty flat underneath the Con Ed power lines.
They're going into the.
They're not going, you, you're playing that Schuman property. But there's, if you, do you know, um
They're talking about getting the.
Do you know where the playground is, and then that second back parking lot?
I mean, this is tough to do, so I'll be there.
If you go straight back out, there's already a trail that's been worn.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that you go up and over the stone wall, that will then take you down to the valley.
Yeah, but Con Ed won't give us permission to go.
I mean, but I think Con Ed would probably, if it was fenced on either side, allow us to walk underneath. Because your mind is, you're in spitting distance of the walk.
I don't think so.
You're in spitting distance of the horse.
We were, we were out there, I know, but we were out there on the North County Trail.
We've tried.
We tried to allow, yeah, and they were.
But we we have tried so much.
Fella people. If you wanna walk, you.
I know exactly, I know exactly where you're talking about.
I mean, where it is. We we were, we were there with the state, and they were like, absolutely positively not.
No.
Cuz we were like, this is a perfect connection to Getney, look where you are, you could see it, and they were like, no, actually not, trespass, yeah.
You gotta try to think of an option.
It's a, it's an informal path, and that maybe that we respect that and just leave alone.
Right now, there's an informal path, because it can be an informal path, but we can't endorse it as a town pathway.
Yeah.
I just think we should keep our eye on the Schuman Road and some properties that maybe come up.
Yeah, you know what, you may be. We should be very worried about the properties that are gonna be coming up on Schuman Road, there's two of them.
Shuman Road is interesting.
So how, what are your priorities?
My priorities, I think a connectivity between Chapakoa Crossing and downtown Chapakoa, where it's on one seventeen, or the chapline is definitely worth while exploring. And I would also put um, at least bringing the road so that, I mean, I would love to connect it all the way through, but I think if I had to prioritize it, I would just put A and B for the short term.
It's also fair in the sense that we do want a Chapakoa, wanna.
No, yeah.
Ivy, um, yeah, no, I I I agree, I, so I like I or or G, if if we figure out a way to make chapline feasible. Um and and A and B for the Millwood sidewalks. But you know, I'd like to suggest that there are also maybe some smaller things that we can do to improve, not not put in the major stretch of sidewalk, but look at crosswalks in places. So, you know, I know we've talked about the crosswalk and the improvements we wanna do in front of Langs.
Mm-hmm.
Um there's also um a lot of folks who um are jaywalking dangerously um at that corner there between, um is it, do we call that Memorial Plaza, where we kick off the Memorial Day parade?
Mm-hmm.
By Langs.
It's like by uh.
Uh and and you know, and and Quaker Hill, and you see people darting across there.
And Quaker Hill? Yeah, cuz people park at that, like the Walgreens.
Across Quaker Hill.
People park in the Walgreens parking lot and.
So there is a sidewalk propos- there is a crosswalk proposal associated with the redevelopment of ninety-one Bedford.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, I hadn't, I didn't see that either.
Yeah, no, that was, that was part of their purpose to work with DOT to get that crosswalk there.
That's that's.
I'm really gonna miss going down that.
That's what we're talking about, people are crossing from like the Walgreens parking lot across one seventeen, like to get to Quaker Hill.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it it changes.
Yeah.
Oh, I I don't know anybody who's ever jumped that in the middle of the night, back to the same thing.
Well. I think we've all gone through that.
Okay, well then.
I was just trying to suggest it, thank you, Shu.
Oh, so that's great, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I mean, the other one that I hear about is um at Prospect Drive, where our sort of downtown.
Prospect and with the going across one.
Going across one twenty. Isn't there a crosswalk over there?
It's a little lower down.
There's not, it's lower down, and so these folks in this area here
It's really lower.
walk up King Street from the train station, and then they either run out a sidewalk on the south side of the street, or they have to. You know, like, you know, there's like a back trail that goes Prospect out right to Bell, like a. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're not gonna do that.
Yeah.
No, I would also uh.
Um so.
Kinda do that, the Cal Woodsy, yeah.
Kids are doing it.
So so we're waiting on uh New York State DOT to give us permission to put in the um the pedestrian beacons by by Langs, and as soon as we find out what
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
we need to do to do that, we'll be in a position to ask them for additional ones and be able to prepare our application accordingly, so that's just good to know.
Okay.
Be considered.
Should should we, should we keep going? Since we've come to a resolution and got an opinion for everyone, and Sabrina's got marching orders?
No, she does, but I was just gonna suggest one thing, I, the key, some of this says existing public sidewalks, we, you know, we don't act, they're not existing yet, they're like, the one by the Chico's, I understand what you're thinking, but it's not technically existing yet, and some of these, when it's, we, I know we started the conversation off with this, some of these have the construction, approved future sidewalks, it's misleading, we haven't uh, it's maybe studying, like instead of under construction, like studying or something.
Call it approved.
Right. Right.
It's some. Right.
Modify this, so that it's a little more accurate.
It's gonna.
It's gonna, the the legend was a little confusing.
I I feel that.
Under review.
Can I ask a question?
Existing maybe planned sidewalks, existing planned sidewalks, instead of existing public sidewalks, other ones under review.
Under review, maybe?
Who's gonna see this? Do we know?
I don't know.
Do we, do you know who's been asking, who who was asked for Roaring Brook Road?
I I don't, I I've never seen that.
There's a couple emails. This is, I've seen an email or two, but not a lot of people.
I've never seen Roaring Brook.
Yeah, I've never seen it before.
We we have copies of emails or, you know, photos.
I've seen a few emails from group.
Mill, I think Mill, Mill River Road or Mill Road, I think someone, it's a very long time ago, someone said.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just, if if there's, if there's emails that you've got that lay out the rationale for that, that'd be interesting to see.
I just, it's a, it's a, one or two, but not a lot.
None of them really lay out right now, they're like, I'm walking every day, it'd be nice if there was a sidewalk, thanks.
Oh.
Like to be a broker.
But I.
I guess I don't. Yeah. I don't even go in this way, no one's crossing the Sawmill.
It's not specific.
Do you see the walking line?
No, it's too.
No, it's dangerous. But I, I'm.
We we need courage with the set of the pathway.
It is too, it's too.
But we keep going.
My way. Now, now, maybe it's called two, no, you know, it's.
Right.
So um, so the, so the chapline is something that that we can um do an RFP to try to do the feasibility study.
That would be crazy.
But we have the RFP, we just have to review it.
And we don't need approval from the state for that, I mean, we might want approval from the county to use their trunk line, but.
There's a wetland.
Yeah.
No, no, but I mean, it's not like uh going along one seventeen.
No.
No, we're just a different aspect of the state for the Langs.
Right, right, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And as far as, as far as, I don't wanna summarize it, I don't wanna generalize it too much, but maybe change the legend.
For the general. It is challenging.
No, no, neither one of them is easy.
Maybe change the legend a little bit on your, on your map, and maybe we'll look into Millwood, and we're gonna review the RFP tonight for the chapline.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I, can I ask a a request also, with Millwood, because it's sort of congested in there, could you like do uh, like something up here where like you expand the detail?
An expansion box.
Yeah, just so that, because it's a little hard to discern where it is and where it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Like a, like a, like a, zoom in, zoom in.
Like that. Yeah. Just to get it up there.
Right, you know, put the box there.
Like what's on the screen.
Well, and and that's why we we put it up on the screen behind you, Rob, so you could really get a better look at that cluster.
And maybe the same thing on the chapakoa, kinda like on the bottom.
Yeah, it's fun.
Yeah.
Okay.
Saw it on the screen.
Yeah, that's better.
I got tired of looking, so I came over here.
All right, good.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Glad you was confusing me.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, this was really helpful.
Is this gonna be on the website at some point?
Not yet, this is all working draft.
We need to fix it.
The circle is.
Do we have printers that print out the storage?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, it takes a very long time at night while nobody's in the building.
Very long time.
I didn't know if you send it out or.
No, 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 Florida.
We know, we have printers and printouts.
I I often wonder if there is like T L O D B E O, that's what I was saying.
All right.
Just because.
Thank you.
Have a night.
Um, so uh, this was a lot of fun, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So Rob, tell me how, how we wanna go forward with the uh, the newest draft of the RFPs.
The chapline, well, if if anybody has comments, I mean, they were supposed to incorporate some of our comments, and I'm not, I'm not sure if they did, so if we have additional comments, we can.
Mm-hmm. Nice. Yeah, I'm not sure they did, I did uh, I do have Ivy's comments from last time, and we can incorporate that.
So I have the comments from last year, but then I also wrote comments this time, it wasn't until I finished writing my comments this time that I was like, I swear, I said these things before.
Time. Oh, yeah. D shop, we're all over it.
I think that, well, the person, I think the president of the actual three visions is not the person at the meeting.
Can you read your something? Yeah, so then maybe um I could take and incorporate
What do you think?
Okay.
Ivy's newest comments, with Ivy's older comments, and we could just pick and get it and use those on it.
Yes.
I haven't seen Ivy's comments.
Well, for older ones, you actually did back then, is it?
The older one, the older ones we talked through at that meeting, not all of them were included, so like, things like we should
We did talk through, yeah.
ask this consultant to identify funding opportu- grant funding opportunities to support this.
Yeah, 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 I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, things like we discussed at some length, I thought, at that meeting, that I thought we needed more preliminary cost estimates earlier on in the in the list of tasks, because the cost estimates don't comment on the tasks, it says.
Why don't we, can I just make a, why don't we just?
You know what, I gotta look at this one more time.
Why don't we just, so maybe we, maybe as Justin, you incorporate Ivy's comments and like write it something.
Yeah, we all need to look at it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We recirculate it, and then if anybody has any issues, we just start dealing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have some more comments, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So just put them in there, and then we see how it works.
Can can we do that just like the moment before?
Well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I think with all these things, we feasibility studies are really gonna be the key.
Yeah, so let's uh.
Well, and unlike last year, we have, you know, monies for studies that we should use.
Well, what I just wanna make sure, which is one of the questions ultimately we're getting into, but I think when we get a final picture of all of the associated costs with the infrastructure, that the infrastructure project, it will give us a much healthier estimate of the final cost and how much money is really left over at the end of the day to invest in sort of other types of projects, I feel like that is a big unknown that's should be answered soon, and with a realistic assessment of what the ultimate cost of the infrastructure is gonna be, what's gonna have to take out of the.
Okay.
Happy to spend down on that.
Oh, we we also have unbalanced and stuff, I mean.
Yeah, no, but that's.
It's not, it's not, it doesn't have to necessarily come out of one thing, I don't know.
No, but I think it's.
No, 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 it, one thing has nothing to do with that, but it's just a matter of just having a a better handle on what the additional possible costs are gonna be, and that's gonna, yeah, that's
I agree, we must.
We're trying very hard to segregate there. The tasks that they are required to do until April, from whatever's going forward.
No, that's true.
This is wonderful, surprise.
I think, I think I think you need to brace yourself a little bit.
Oh, good, I'm braced.
Well, it'd be great if it starts sooner or later.
I'm completely braced.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have some um resolutions.
Water rents. Did we discuss water rents already in public?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. When Rob, dear, the.
We were here and Thro.
Yes. Unpaid water, unpaid water, how they go on tax bills, has moved taxes, yeah.
Oh, we did, yes. And the resolution that we. Okay.
Okay, um please go to the agenda, if there's anything else that you would like to
No, 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 I just wanna, I couldn't remember if that was in public or not.
Okay.
Okay, so we do any um
Yeah.
There are there are four resolutions.
Right, I'm gonna get one page.
Do you need to raise that the five hundred dollars graphic or
No, Rob said he didn't need it, as long as the board was okay with it being extended, um that was fine.
Okay. Means a bunch of dollars.
So just mention that somewhere in the, you know, in the minutes that it was considered, okay?
Okay.
So the first one is the contingency funds.
Alright, I'll set
We need to set, we need to set a public hearing for the
Fable.
I wanna
It's on
Right.
Yeah, that would
Oh, that, oh, great, cool.
Yeah, okay, so why don't I why don't I just read through them?
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I move to approve the following allocation of twenty eighteen contingency funds from contingency count A one nine nine oh dot O eight eight eight. Uh the first is for ninety seven thousand dollars, uh which is for police salaries. Next one's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is for Chapakoa Crossing Consulting. And the next one is for seven thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty nine cents, which is for litigation overage. Could we actually give the exact amount, but it wasn't ninety seven thousand, it was ninety seven thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and seventy six cents.
One hundred and six.
It's it's fine, it's in the resolution, as outlined in the resolution.
Yeah, it's written after.
Second
Okay, one favor, aye.
Alright, I moved uh per payment of claims in the amount of three hundred and six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and fifty two cents. Uh of which sixty six thousand seven hundred and thirty eight dollars and forty cents is for twenty eighteen. And three hundred thousand dollars and fifty two cents and twelve fifty two dollars and twelve cents is for twenty nineteen, listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detailed reports, all dated March fifth, twenty nineteen. Checks will be issued mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March sixth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
One in favor.
Alright.
I move to set up public caring for the modification of the vape law to include recreational marijuana sales to be held on Tuesday, March twenty sixth, twenty nineteen at seven P M in the Assembly Room in Newcastle Town Hall.
Second.
One in favor, aye.
Alright.
I move to approve change order number one in the amount of seven thousand dollars to Peter J. Landy Inc. for certain for the additional curtain drain trench excavation for the curtain drain and subways for the concrete sidewalk and granite curbing for the King Street sidewalk replacement project.
Second.
One in favor, aye.
Oshager.
That
If any, if any additions are supposed to
Did you hear any Girl Scouts?
I'm sorry, see
The Girl Scout, less many Girl Scouts requests.
Oh, um yeah, this there's one last thing, so we got a request from the Girl Scouts on for uh to sell Girl Scout cookies at the train station. And the interesting thing is is it doesn't come from our local Girl Scouts anymore, it comes from like the Girl Scouts central.
The National Girl Scouts.
Corporate.
So I asked them for assurance that whatever Girl Scout troops were selling at the Girls at the Chapakoa train station were Newcastle troops. And she was like, well, some.
No.
Yeah, and we we don't like we don't like allow outside groups to
Mm-mm.
Yeah.
Sell things at the train station.
it's our it's our train station, it's unlike a different station.
Yeah, so I don't think it's different this year, and I haven't been to a meeting in a while, but usually Chapakoa Girl Scouts organize his sales for Chapakoa Girl Scouts. Joanie is the new Lori Townsend.
Right, no, so it turns out that this is this is somebody different and they do it from
And Yeah, yeah. Brito, what Some of the things, so they've tried to centralize more stuff, some things now go through the central office, but I think that we are still, we Chapakoa Girl Scouts are still
No, because they
coming up with the different locations towards us.
So we're gonna deny the request from the central office and if our local Girl Scout troops come to us, then we can consider that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what we're gonna say is the central office or the FDA guarantees.
So we don't know who, we don't know, or do they need to get the site approved from corporate in order for them to be able to place our local people? Somebody should reach out to our Girl Scouts.
But if
They don't have to place our local people.
I I used to allow
We already tried.
We want our local people
If if that if that's
Also, I Try?
We gotta
We approved our local, yes. Yeah, they don't have to place our local people that that kind of regional or national.
But if but if they do, then the request should say for the local group.
Look, you know, things change, because maybe insurance and stuff like that, who knows what the who knows the reason, everybody's getting more centralized.
But but they but Jill asked that question, they weren't willing, they said, no, it's gonna be outsiders. The only way we're gonna prove it is if they say it's only for local.
Well, they said it may it may be outsiders, some.
They said some, some.
No, but
But we would only allow insiders.
What do they what was what was the
What was the
You just wait, you just said
We approved the Pocket Park, right, for them to the the local people, the local troops asked for the Pocket Park.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's true, they did.
This is corporate and they're asking for about seven weeks.
No.
Unless they guarantee that it's for Chapakoa Girl Scouts.
I'd say no.
It's not like a weekend you were there, it's they gave us the dates, but it's over two months period.
I said no.
Seven weeks, that's a long time, that's gonna annoy everybody anyway, seven weeks.
Yeah.
So I wrote um
Glad I should say, who knows the time, the date, the status.
Through this last year.
That's pretty good when you see them, but
I said, you know, I what I asked her to say is I'm okay with it, it's only
Yeah, it's a while, so I don't wanna
Too many cookies.
I actually always have to, I actually always have to buy them, I can't just ignore them. Yeah, Chapakoa mom
That's a hard one.
That's why I buy so many, it's like, you don't get
Should we
Yeah, you want great pockets, you can pretend they're
I
I had this for a long discussion.
We'll say
But they have to have zero count, like
Yes, right. Oh, that reminds me, I'm selling Girl Scout to these.
Denied.
Alex, I mean, Alexander, obviously, not me.
Right, right, okay, sure.
Anybody wants
Do they have any new ones this year?
They do.
They have any new gluten free wow last year?
Um once they have the Toffee Tastic, Toffee Tastic is five dollars a box, that's gluten free.
Did they make thin mint gluten free ones yet?
Um so no.
Need to make the thin mint ones gluten free.
Yeah.
They're vegan.
They are vegan, the thin mint is vegan, yeah.
No chocolate chip cookies, huh? I mean, they've had chocolate, they had years ago.
No, no chocolate chip, yeah.
No, cause they don't, yeah, you can't. Alright, so you'll find out with the deal, I mean, if it's new if it's Chap if it is Newcastle troops
Yeah. Yeah.
they're welcome to use the train station, right? I mean, that would be the resolution?
I think we would deny this request.
Would
And if I think if a local Girl Scout troop, much like they did with the Pocket Park, comes to us and says, hey, we wanna use the train station, we would approve that.
Yeah.
No, but
But it would come from a local group as opposed to the
I put this local government as a position, I I have, I said, I don't understand.
Well, there may be, as I said, there may be insurance for other reasons.
I don't know who this
No, 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 they asked just to use the Pocket Park.
You might
You know, if you could just have one person
But if but if if there is a something a change, then they have to just guarantee us that it's only Chapakoa troop. Why don't you give permission for a Chapakoa
And where are we gonna kick them out if it's not?
Yeah.
Well, seven weeks they're not gonna get anyways, I mean, that's an insane long selling season.
Well, seven weeks, right. No, it's well, first when they say seven weeks, they're talking about seven times.
Not every day, but
Yeah.
Right, over seven weeks, it's talking about once a week.
Yeah.
They're not talking about seven weeks straight, they they don't, there's a mother that's gonna be out there every day for seven weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but they they have specific dates, like three days here, five days here, five days here, they didn't just say the month of April.
Or do it in seven days?
Because it's not the local troop, it's like probably like hundreds of kids.
Is it more than five, seven days then?
It's more than
Yeah.
Is it more than seven days?
Yes.
At seven weeks, so
Yeah.
It's like twenty five days.
Cause it's not just the local troops.
Wow, too much.
It could it could it could be just the local, that
You know, that's what she said.
No, it's just the gala is ready to us and she's from
So they probably look at the big train stations of Westchester.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
They're heading there.
Yes, they did, they asked about Holland, so they're like getting all the taxidermy.
Yeah, yeah.
So I I'll ask, I'll have people find out, I make a motion to adjourn, yeah.
It is. I'll find out, yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna find out.
Second.
One in favor?
That is.
Alright.
Alright.